Hang on. Okay, and we're live.
Okay. Call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. Mr. Butler, if you'd like to do a roll call for us, attendance?
Actually, I'll do that.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Mr. Blathers is now present. Mr. Betcher?
Present.
Mr. Marks?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Simlin?
Here.
All but Mr. Blathers is present.
Motion, excuse me, Ms. Flathers. Please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
A second.
Any discussion? Although...
Seconded and seconded.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Other than the hearing, we don't have anyone registered to address the commission. So, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting? Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Items of...
Motion to approve.
We have a second.
A second.
Any discussion or changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Next is the issue of the hearing regarding variance request for the after-the-fact approval of a fence built at 2435 Fremont Avenue.
Okay, well, that's, as I understand, the variance was requested by Sonia Mason. Is that, are you present, ma'am? Okay.
I think just for a couple of housekeeping matters, I'd like first to make part of the record the notice of public hearing on dated August 5, 2021, to the neighbors. That's required under our statutes to be given to anyone interested parties within a certain proximity of the structure, 20 days advance of the hearing. It was sent out on August 12, 2021. Second, I'd like to hear from Mr. Putoff, who is our code enforcement official. And, Mr. Putoff, I'm going to hand you a document. It's got three letters on it. Can you take a look at that for me, please? Could you describe the three letters for me, please?
Exhibit A is the first letter I sent to Ms. Mason. Asking her to submit her zoning permit for the fence because they had already been put up. That was on 24 May of 2001.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, sorry. Twenty-eight June is exhibit B. I sent the second notice, giving her until 7 July of 21 to submit a zoning application with as-built drawings of the fence. And she did submit that. On 15 July, I sent her a letter, this exhibit C, denying the application based on two issues, the front lot restrictions and the fence height.
Mr. Putoff, did you say she did submit the drawings after your letter of June 28th?
Actually, there were, I did cite her to mayor's court, and then she submitted after citation to mayor's court.
Okay, and the drawings were still inadequate?
The drawings were adequate, but the fence itself was not.
Okay, so tell me how the design for the fence does not comply with our zoning.
The front lot restriction, which is 1151.01, the fence can't pass the front lane of the house, and it does. And the fence height is six feet all the way around, which is in counter zoning.
And the letter, you had a typo there, is 1121 is 1151, which complied with the fence height?
Correct.
Okay. And so, all right, so these letters all went out by regular mail?
Correct.
And they were never returned, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you've had some discussions with her about the fences, the fence?
Correct. And once it was denied, she was advised us to apply for variance.
Okay, all right. And so that's why we're here tonight, is that correct? Okay. So, Ms. Mason?
Yes, sir.
Could you step up to the podium so we can hear from you? Tell us why you need a variance.
Because, first of all, I had no idea that I had to do all of that. And I'm 62, and I'm just simply working on my retarded bucket list.
Okay. All right.
I paid for years to get those bushes trimmed. They were a horrible lot mess. I even cut my finger one a year along with the electric cord. So, I just, I didn't know, and I'm sorry.
Okay.
I think I did it in good taste, though.
I...
I understand.
Well, does anybody from the Planning Commission have any questions? Or of Mr. Putoff?
I just said there's two pieces to it right behind you. The horse is standing in front of the house, correct?
And that's actually, to me, that's my backyard, because I have my side, dr. style house behind me. That's my, to me, is my backyard.
How, Mr. Putoff, how far from the plane of the house does it extend?
It's quite a few feet. There's a picture of it right there.
It's kind of hard to see.
But as you can see, too, it has set back off the sidewalk.
So, her house is where? The house we see right there?
Yeah, that's my house.
Oh, I see, so, yeah, you're right. It's about, would you say it's 10 and 15 feet?
Roughly, yes.
Yeah. And am I correct that the current zoning or regulation is that the fence cannot be any further than the front edge of the house?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Butler, there's a picture you might, you could look it up on the side to look at shows. The whole fence comes from front of the house. Mr. Hirth, can you make that full screen?
I'm sorry, can you make that full screen? I brought it down. I have to find my... Oh, yeah, that's my...
The photos kind of cross them.
Actually, it hit on the...
The magnifier.
The magnifier up at the top. Almost there.
Keep going.
There you go.
Little more.
So, it appears that the gate is coming off of the front corner of the house. Correct?
Correct, yes.
Which is by, like, by our code, it should be going straight across.
So, to be clear, this, this is the infraction here, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Plus the height.
Right.
Plus the height.
But if it just went straight across, it would be in compliance.
Correct.
Even though she initially should have requested zoning certificate.
Correct.
Would the six, the six feet, would he comply as well?
I'm sorry, I was just speaking of the...
Yeah, the six feet would now.
The six feet as well, all right, not a variance.
Okay. And is, you referenced the side yard as serving as your backyard. So...
As you look at the house, my side door is right here. That's my yard that I cut right there. And the bushes was going along the front there.
And how far, like, you have an actual backyard behind your house, though, right?
Not much.
The yard that's behind the house is on the side office and pretty long in that area, pretty shallow. That's way over there.
Mr. Hirth, is there, either anybody, has there been any communication from neighbors after they received the letters?
No.
Is there anybody else, any questions? Ma'am, do you have anything else? Okay. Any, any input on this issue?
You want to adjourn the hearing and then discussion, or not adjourn the hearing, but adjourn the discussion portion from the applicant. Follow me.
Okay. Maybe you can go ahead and sit down. Yeah, that's worse, too. Thank you.
So, I mean, we spent a lot of time on the fence code. I, the six-foot part doesn't bother me, the, as we've granted other variances for people with that, but the...
Is this meeting, I wasn't allowed, I'm sorry?
Yes.
There's a gentleman out front, I'll let him in for the meeting. He should come in the side door, and he needs to wear a mask.
Okay. Here is the, the front yard is my, and I understand that layout of your yard is tough, but setting the precedent of allowing fences in front yards is my biggest concern.
And the one thing I do want to point out, and I agree.
Sure.
The other thing I want to point out is, we have been pretty adamant, when this issue has come before this committee in the past, of requiring that when a fence visible from the front exceeds...
Yeah.
I'm sorry, which one? Oh, okay. The one with the turquoise side.
The yard definitely varies with the design of the house and these things, so it's...
You have double lot?
Double lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we have also been pretty adamant about requiring, if they exceed the height requirement, that they be more of a decorative nature.
I agree.
Yeah, I think the last time we had that discussion, four feet up, it had to be decorative.
Well, I don't know that it was necessarily four feet up, but definitely more of a decorative nature when...
You have the top lattice or with caps.
Like the one on your Elbrook.
Fremont and...
Elbrook? Elbrook?
Mayflower.
Mayflower, yeah. I mean, it's been, actually, it's been something we've addressed more than one occasion. There have been a couple of different ones.
But none have ever extended to the front?
No, not beyond the front of the house.
My concern would be that you, you can't stop it if you approve this, that'd be my concern.
I agree.
But what I was concerned equally with the one, Fremont, Mayflower, because of that,
and that was a corner lot, that...
That's a corner lot, makes it kind of odd, and all corner lots are odd, but then we
had four months of back-and-forth discussion to make it work.
Yeah, but none of them extended to the front of the house.
So, it sounds to me like at this point, we're not willing to simply approve the zoning as is, but maybe set some, some stipulations.
So, Mr. Simlin, I'm sorry, may I ask Ms. Mason a question, please?
Sure.
Yes. So, was, did this fence replace something that was already there?
Yes. It wasn't. Can't fix it, the technology is a little bit...
That's all right.
Shrub line. That's what she, the bushes that she was referring to earlier. It was a line of bushes in the front area.
About where the fence is?
Yeah.
Now, there was a fence with those bushes, was there?
I can't tell. There's one on the other side, though, I think.
So, the fence was seated directly behind the line of bushes?
Did you remove the bushes?
And, and like a, what do you call it, chicken fence?
Chicken one?
No, one chicken, like, it's like chicken.
Chicken wire.
Oh, that's good, that's temporary. There's, there was like this, you can't really see it very well, but there was something there.
So, when you replaced the fence that was there, did you set it out further in the yard?
This is...
You can think of a mast on it, and it'll come over.
That's a tree, that's...
This is the mast.
Okay.
You can see stakes.
So, I guess what I'm trying to, because I'm trying to...
Like chicken wires.
Where was the original fence located on the property?
Right.
It was like right in front of the mansion.
Green.
So, so my question is, this new fence, how further than the old fence, how much? Okay, so you basically replaced it.
In the same place.
But she took down the entire fence.
Yes.
Very sensitive of the old.
It was just stakes.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay.
Mr. Betcher, you have any input?
No, again, I, just back to my original thoughts of if I would be in supportive, and I don't know what the rest of the committee would feel like, but if, you know, I don't like having the fence in the front yard, it sets a terrible precedent for the rest of the village. We fought a lot with rewriting the fence code and made sure that was very plainly in there. I would say if she could follow the plane of the house and lower the front part to four feet, I would be, that would be my support. So, the, the front yard part is within parallel of the house and cut down to four feet. The sides and the back, I'm fine with it being six foot if the neighbors have not voiced any concern or are not here to...
When I believe the changes that we made allowed for six feet across the back and the side.
So, that would, that would be my ask. Just because I, front yard fences in the village are not going to be what I'm in support of.
Mr. Scott, any input?
I, I agree.
Mr. Marks?
Yeah, I, I, the front yard fence, like, I think opens up, it's like a stockade. You allow this once, you're done, you might as well take the order and call someone.
So, then at this point, we're, we're looking for to just meet the code, or are we looking to make any allowances for the height?
I think there would be a variance required to, for the sides and back, and again, we'll have to look at the code again, but for the sides and the back to be six feet, there needs to be a variance. The fence shall be erected of construction, which is greater than six feet. Unless it abuts an industrial or multifamily, I think.
So, it's at six feet, so it meets that now.
No.
It can't be greater than six feet unless...
Because it doesn't abut a multifamily. I'm looking at this part five of section B.
Well, right, but it's greater than, so if it's six feet already...
Oh, and some rear, in the rear yard, okay.
That was a modification, the last time we updated the code, was we allowed it to go to six feet.
Side as well. So, she would be in compliance if it was four feet across the front and parallel to the front edge of the house, and then six feet side and back.
Correct.
So, she really wouldn't need a variance.
So, the six feet, the, the code states that six feet is on the back of the property?
And sides.
So, okay.
Yeah, that's what she did on May, Mayflower.
That one, there was...
That was a corner lot.
There, with it being a corner lot, it was closer, came closer to the street than what was allowed.
Yeah.
On the side yard.
Even on the side, on Mayflower, you're allowed six feet there, right?
We...
I agree. You're, you're correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if she wants to keep it six feet in the front, on the side, parallel with the house.
Mr. Hirth, that's under section B.
That would be the variance.
The front.
The front, yeah. The front, if you want, allow her to have it six feet, grant you a variance.
And as I pointed out in the past, when the front fence has exceeded the height, we have added additional stipulations to that than just, aside from just simply granting...
Sure.
The, the height variation. Do we want to maintain that precedent?
Which precedent, allowing it to be six feet, is decorative above four?
Yes.
It's just caps on, like, doesn't he have caps on top of the posts, or?
It has always been lattice, so that it's not a solid...
But that Mayflower and Fremont's not lattice, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. He, they replaced the, the top two feet with lattice, right?
Yes. I don't think it was quite two feet, but definitely the top, the top half. If they wanted to exceed the four foot.
You are correct, it's lattice.
What steps do we need to take?
Yeah, I would call for a vote.
Is there a motion?
Wow, a motion.
To that, does somebody want to make a motion to that effect?
And that would...
So, what about the setback?
Needs to be parallel.
It needs to be parallel with the front of the house.
So, we're all in agreement with that?
Yes.
Parallel with the house? And so it has to be moved back?
Yes.
For one? And either she can keep it, do you have four feet or, or decorative?
If it exceeds the height, that we would require that it have some kind of an open lattice-type element to it.
That's, which is the only variance you're granting.
Yes.
You're essentially saying she's got to be in compliance, other than if the front fence exceeds four feet, it has to, the additional two feet has to be decorative in nature, something like lattice or...
Correct.
Okay, do you have any other standards for that? I mean, it's vague just to say bear, just to say...
Decorative. What we've required in the past is for the homeowner to come back with a proposal, honestly.
Yes.
Like we did on the Mayflower.
Yes. And what we did on the LaSana bill, the Mott's property.
Correct.
It's the same thing.
So, what do we need?
We need a motion to deny the variance as requested, to grant a variance if the homeowner chooses to allow the front fence to be up to six feet, with two feet being decorative in nature, but the, the setback has to be parallel to the, to the edge of the house.
As part of the code.
Right, as part of the code. And then, really, nothing else, because the rear and the back can be six feet. So, that would be the motion that someone could make.
Okay, let me see if I have a... Motion is denied as requested for variance. Further motion that fence needs to be removed and placed parallel to the front of the house. No further on the front of the property than the front of the building?
That's not really a motion nearly as much as just the...
Within code.
Within code.
Yeah.
So, denying the variance to move it further requires that.
Near the front building.
So, who else to make a motion to deny the, the variance as requested?
I will make a motion. To that effect.
Any discussion?
I feel we...
On that, Ava?
Aye.
Okay, so then, the next part of this is the fence.
And really, would it make sense that we don't actually make a motion at this point, but like, deal with that upon presentation?
I think that's a good idea, that if she chooses to return, or actually probably just require her to make another var, a quest for a variance. So, it comes back.
Unless she...
We should continue.
Four feet.
Yeah, we didn't require... No, no, no. That's what I'm saying. If she doesn't, but if she chooses to, she can.
So, yeah, so if you would want to extend the fence higher than four feet, which is taller than what the ordinance allows, then our request would be that that be more of a decorative nature and that you could present a...
I don't, I don't know how to do that. I'm sorry, I say I don't have any more money, I just, I don't know how to do that. I, I've been saying for three, I'm sorry, I didn't know, but I don't know how to do that.
So, who originally constructed the fence for you?
I got them off the next door, off Manor next door.
Okay, so you had someone constructed for you?
Yes.
So, I, I want to make sure you understand what, what has been discussed here. The fence is too far out, so you re, you totally replace the fence that was there. By doing that, you have to conform with current code. So, the fence needs to be moved back to be parallel to the front of your house, to not set out as far in the yard as it currently sits. So, that's number one. So, the variance to keep the fence there is denied, which means the fence needs to be removed.
Move back.
Well, it needs to be removed.
So, the second part of this is that to replace that fence, it needs to be decorative. We can send you to a couple of different places in the village where that's been required to do, so you can see what that is. The individual who did that construction for you might be able to reconfigure that for you.
But I, I thought we weren't going to take any action on that this evening. We're not, I think we're just presenting that information. So...
The whole fence, the whole entire fence is not to be taken down, just a part that extends past the...
Past the gate, past the front of the house.
That's all, everything else stays.
Right.
Although if she lowered it to four feet, and it's, even with the house, that would be in compliance.
Yes. But, yeah, that just falls within what's allowed by the, the ordinance. Okay, so at this point, I think we're... Done with that portion of it, right?
You've made, has, you made the motion, voted on the motion, so now you can, there's no further business.
Okay, so at the moment, our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 4th, at 6:30, assuming or pending business.
So, let me understand, so Ms. Mason is clear, there's not an order yet to remove the fence, correct?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
She's, she, this variance was appealing essentially Mr. Putoff's order, that she was in, not in compliance, and the fence had to be removed and made, brought into compliance. There is a, this is, there's a citation pending in mayor's court to that effect. So, no, she's under an order to remove the fence, well, not remove it, move it back, lower it.
So...
Or remove it. Pardon?
Or remove the front of it.
Well, sure, she could remove, to bring together compliance, yeah.
The materials are essentially almost the same.
They just need to be moved down.
Cut it down.
So...
Best person to do that.
Time frame for her to get back to us on what she's doing.
I, the, the order's pending right now. I mean, we, we're not, we can't dictate to her timeframes for asking for another variance, which is what she'd have to do. It's up to her to go from here.
And the only reason it would require an additional variance would be if she wanted the new fence to be higher than four feet. At that point, we would need a variance for what, for the higher, the, the higher height, but as it is now, it's been denied.
Right.
That was the only thing in front of us this evening. Are there any resources or something that we could assist her with, if she doesn't have the financial capacity to do, put, you know, do that? She's, I don't want her to go to mayor's court and get fined for something she can't afford to do.
I can tell you typically at mayor's court, if all we're looking for is compliance, and when they come to mayor's court, we give them an opportunity to come into compliance, and then typically, we would, we will find them, we will, we will find them, they'll pay the cost, the cost only. Because really, the, the function is to bring them into compliance.
So, now I have to find another contractor?
Or that contractor. If it was, were they, I, I can't comment on the contractor, whoever they are, but if they installed it, you could call them and say, by the way, this is not, I'm not in compliance, what would it be to take this and move it back and make it four feet or put a decorative top on it, top third of it? That's, and if you want to get an idea what that looks like, are you going to build up Fremont today?
Yes.
Okay, when you get up past May, right before Mayflower, so...
The house on the road.
Elbrook, then Mayflower, before, before Mayflower, look on the right, you'll see a fence, and it's pretty much what we're talking about. They, they installed a six-foot fence, and so they had to take that and make the top part of it decorative, and that's what you can see.
Ma'am, if you can hold a contractor, have him call me, I'll explain exactly what needs to be done.
Yeah, stay hot, yeah, Mr. Putoff can help you.
I would think the cheapest way to do it is move it back, lower it four feet.
I would think the cheapest way to do it is move it back, lower it four feet.
The post or in concrete.
Yeah, well, they'll.
They'll have to take out the, the post.
The fence contractor can take out the post, anybody can, or they can cut them off of the ground, right?
Wouldn't that be ugly?
No, it'll be, it'll be in the ground, so it won't be seen.
It's not ideal.
They can reuse the material that's there, so you don't have to buy more material. You just need to move it and lower it.
Yeah. They're legitimate contractor, they'll, they'll know exactly, and if they talk to Jim Putoff, he can explain.
It was a gentleman, I saw the post that you were referring to where you asked for, and I don't, I'm assuming it was a guy that just does it on the side, so.
It was on the next door, I thought, you know, they'd say.
Oh, no, here, there, yeah.
Yeah, talk with your neighbors.
Yeah. Yeah, from Deer Park. A gentleman from Deer Park, based on his response to her post. I just looked it up.
Oh, they did, okay.
Okay, so what?
Yeah. Monday?
Well, you'll be coming to court, and again, we'll be asking you to come into compliance. Oftentimes, what we do is we'll continue the case again to give you an opportunity to bring it into compliance. We can't do it indefinitely, but we will give you an opportunity.
You're saving that money.
Yeah, yeah.
So a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.